Together, give it to you as a group one more time and then have you vote on it in the coming months. But we'll talk about that a little more later. Any questions about where we are or what we're doing before I dive into the new?
New.
Great.
Let's dive.
So yeah, again, we finished up that use table. So we're in Article five, five point zero three, which mine says page seventy-five. It may, it may be slightly different on your version depending on exactly where we're looking at. But five point zero three, which is agriculture. So as we get into the rest of Article five, you know, five is really dealing with the uses. So we have the use table. A lot of these are kind of, let's say, special use categories where they, we have kind of regulations that are specific to these certain uses. So we'll, we'll go through these. Some of these I don't know that we'll have a whole lot to discuss. Some of these I think we'll have a lot to discuss on. So as always, eager for your feedback. So section five point zero three has to do with agriculture. This is one of those, I don't know that we're going to have a lot to discuss on this one because the state and the Ohio revised code very clearly outlines exactly what zoning can and can't regulate when it comes to agriculture. When it comes to agriculture, the truth is, we can't regulate a lot. There are some exceptions for that. Generally, if, if a lot is in a platted subdivision that's on a parcel of less than one acre in size, we do have the ability to regulate agricultural uses and agricultural buildings. But if, if a property is, say, FR one, it's one of the large lot properties, that's particularly one that's greater than five acres, then really the township does not have the ability to regulate agricultural use or even standards for buildings that are used for agricultural purposes.
What's left in the way of agriculture in Orange Township presently?
Not a lot, but you know, there, there are a few parcels here and there that are farm.
How, how big are they? How, just best guess. I mean, you don't need to be exact. I'm just kind of trying to get a handle because what I view is I don't see that much left and you know, and that all gets bought up for other things here in Orange Township and...
There, there are certainly some parcels that are kind of in that five to fifteen acres, you know, range. Large scale farming has mostly, that ship has sailed at this point.
Those other small farms you're talking about, are those still used as farms or just properties?
Generally, yes.
Okay.
And something to keep in mind, so that, you may have heard the phrase ag is king in Ohio and township zoning restrictions is prime example of that. That basically, if you don't have anything in your zoning resolution, if it qualifies as agriculture, which is broader than, again, you mentioned farming, but it's a lot broader than what just ordinarily comes to mind. If you don't put anything in your zoning resolution, even the limited things you can regulate, then if some, basically, if anybody wants to come in and do an ag use, they're able to do that. So what we've talked about, the, what will go in your, your code is pretty consistent with what you had in the past. It basically is, is the law of, of what you can do. Something that pops up a lot is animal husbandry, which again, you might think of like livestock, that sort of things, but think, but it's actually broader than, you know, it includes chicken coops and, you know, goats and even like kennels and, and do, like dog breeding businesses can sometimes fall under agriculture. So I think the only, Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, but the only thing that really is impacted in this section is just the lot size of FR one, because I think our previous code said farm residential was a minimum of one point nine eight acres, which most of the properties that are FR one were non-conforming. So that is taken out of this. Is that my understanding?
The lot size in the FR one district is dropping.
Yeah.
Or minimum.
So I think as far as what we...
So the minimum is one now?
That's what we're proposing.
Okay. So FR one is minimum one acre.
Yeah. And almost, I mean, think of like all the Blue Center Village parcels, those are FR one, they're like point tenths of an acre, so.
And then if you're over five acres, you're automatically agricultural? Is that sort of what we're saying?
If they want to, if they want to do agriculture, you cannot do anything about it.
Essentially, yes. So if, if they're over five acres in size and they have either a building or a use that is considered agricultural, then we do not have the authority through zoning to regulate that.
So if they were previously commercial and went to agriculture, they can't do that?
Probably.
So there is, there is case law. So I, what you, what your example is basically a property that's currently commercial, could they become ag? Or, or could they, you know?
Yeah.
Today, I don't have the agricultural exemption, but could I tomorrow? There, there is case law that, it's like, look, farms have to start somewhere. And so there have been situations where, where again, as farm, as farms, a new business operation starts up. Yesterday, they didn't have the ag exemption, tomorrow they do. So that is, that is a possibility.
The, the only thing I'm thinking about is when you think about something like eighty acres farms or something like that, where they have hydroponic farming inside a warehouse, right? Inside a warehouse, it's basically hydroponic farming where they grow all the leafy vegetables inside using LED lights in winter. So that would be farming.
That would be, yeah, that'd be an ag use. So, but growing plants, horticulture, that type of thing, yep, that would be, that would be considered an agricultural, agricultural use.
Okay. Just one more nuance. What about if that plants are marijuana?
Oh, you said marijuana? You had, I am, I believe that as part of like the new law changes, it specifically is carved out that, that marijuana cultivation does not fall under agricultural.
Good to know.
Because it's such a regulated plant.
So what does that fall under?
Its own, its own section.
It's separate animal.
It's a own thing. So, so if that's almost a state run or federal run thing, so if they decide to come in, they come in, you don't have anything to say about it essentially?
Oh, no, no, no. So, so marijuana does not fall under the agricultural exemption?
Right, right.
Today.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
Although I think you are allowed to have certain number...
The township, the township currently has a prohibition on any marijuana grow facility. So that's prohibited in Orange Township.
So even if you have like five acres in the garden, you can't grow anything for personal use either?
No, you can't. You can for personal use, but a commer, a commercial op, and again, I know that there's restrictions on like how many plants you can have or what you can grow for personal...
I'm just waiting for, you know, somebody to put some plants in their garden and have the neighbors complain. I'll just, I'll just put that out there.
But that's not the, I can tell you, that's not the, the zoning folks know that. But yeah, in terms of a commercial, like growing operation, that is prohibited in Orange Township. So that's something that, that would not come online.
Okay, okay. And the other, we can't do anything about anyway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Carter, just to go back to your example, you know, getting away from the cannabis side, like it was eighty acres farms and it, you know, they did want to do it in a building, they would kind of have two choices that, you know, one, they could do it in a commercial zone, or they could do it really in, in any zone and claim agricultural exemption and, and do it that way.
They, they can do it in any zone, that is what my question was.
The dog breeding is get five acres.
And that cattle, right?
It, it can fall under animal husbandry. So animal husbandry is considered an agricultural use.
Type of things that could be profitable with land cost, what it would be here in Orange Township, because you know, farming is, don't forget about that. But there's some other, other things that could be. And so that's covered in there at some point, and that's what that is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
To the extent you're able to regulate agricultural uses, your zoning resolution meets the law. Again, there, there are exceptions, there, there's limiting factors of what you can do, to the extent you are able to, the zoning resolution is outlined to hit that threshold. Okay.
So again, there's not a whole lot to, to move around in the agricultural section just because the state kind of very clearly outlines what we can and can't do. But it's something that we'll continue to look at that language just in case there need to be tweaks, but we feel like it's in a pretty good place.
Is it cold in here?
Are you cold?
Yeah, I was, I was asking anyone else, were they cold?
I'll put it up.
The last time I was cold.
I got it, I got it.
I was like, is it cold in here? Thank you.
All right. So five point zero four, and this would, this would be new, would be for food trucks. Really, you know, I don't know that this is a pressing issue necessarily, but it's something that a lot of jurisdictions have tried to figure out, you know, do we need to regulate this? How do we regulate this? What we're, the approach that we're suggesting that we take as a township is, they do have to follow some rules, but we're not going to issue a permit because it's, it's unrealistic to issue a permit for every food truck that comes with the township. Just in terms of enforcement, I just don't know that that's practical. But what we would do is say, you know, if you're operating on private property, you can't be within a building setback or within a parking setback or in a site distance triangle as defined by the county engineer. So it's, it's basically saying, you know, if you're operating on private property, you need to be kind of a little towards the center of that property and not causing issues with being right next to the property line or the roadway. Does that make sense? Any questions, comments there?
Just curious from, from a, so you're saying that to issue permits would be, yeah, I don't know how many food trucks you have here that...
I, I mean, yeah, I, one, they're constantly changing, a lot of them. And two, they, you know, they may come in on, on short notice. And so if they're, if standardized brewing has a food truck on Sunday, or they're supposed to have a food truck on Sunday, and then the day before, they get a call saying food truck can't make it, they want to find another food truck, well, our zoning office isn't open on weekends, whatever, you know, what are they going to do?
Yeah, I'm just thinking from a revenue perspective of permitting, but...
The other thing too is, you know, I, I know a lot of food trucks are, you know, they're businesses too, they're usually small businesses that are trying to get off the ground, they're...
Yeah, that's true.
And they are required to get inspections from the fire department and the health district.
Yeah, necessarily from...
Question I have with the food trucks is, do you want to limit the time that they're on a particular site? And I'm thinking, because like in the short north, Mickey's Late Night Slice is actually a food truck. It just doesn't move. Or I think downtown by...
Well, we have one that's, lives there at Olentangie Brew, River Brewery, there's that green, I don't know what it's called.
Exactly.
More discussion.
That's what I'm thinking.
Although it, it does actually physically moves, I guess.
It moves, but it does live there.
Yeah. So, and I know there's a couple of other places downtown, like Frye's, one of those type places where they have like permanent trucks or trailers. There's usually also one by Seventh Sun Brewing that's always in the parking lot there. So do we want to make sure they rotate? Do we care?
So if it is in the public right of way, we do have conditions that they, they do need to limit their hour of operations, if I'm reading that correctly.
Yeah, and so basically, if they're in the right of way, then they have to get a permit from, from us, and not necessarily a zoning permit, but an operate, through our operations department to operate in the right of way.
Public right of way is on the road, but if they're in the parking lot...
Then we, we would not.
Exactly. So, for example, the, the, the one here on twenty-three...
Oh, yeah, near the car wash.
Yeah, by the car wash, it's there. That one I've seen actually move, it doesn't seem to live there permanently.
I, I thought the thing was dead, I didn't, I've never seen it do anything, but okay.
Do you have a comment, two cents?
Yeah, it's about monthly?
Mark, I'm sorry, can you just state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Mark Freeman, four seventy-eight Glen Side Lane. It's not unusual, probably maybe once a month, somebody in my neighborhood organizes to get a food truck in and publicizes it in the neighborhood and, and all that. And I don't know whether they cite it in somebody's driveway or whether they're just parking on the street. Would that be considered public right of way, I, I would assume?
If it's on your street in Hyman, yes. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think there will be an enforcement challenge with this, because we've never had anything in our code before.
I mean, if, if, if they arrange for a taco truck or whatever kind of food truck to come in and sit for three or four hours in front of somebody's house on the public right of way, do we really care?
I mean, I don't care if it's for a couple hours.
Yeah.
As long as...
It's a neighborhood gathering, everybody in the neighborhood.
It's not like it's, as long as it's not impeding like the fire department or something.
Yeah, and I think this, if I read this right, it gives us the flexibility, if there is a truck that's living on the public right of way, that there, that's an opportunity for us to provide some type of enforcement and say, hey, you, you gotta move.
It has to be extreme in my opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that there's often a truck like right at the north end of the twenty-three underpass by two seventy. Just before you get to it, you can turn left and there's some private parking lot that, that a truck sits in. And they're there more often than not around dinnertime. And nobody seems to care, they don't throw up a lot.
Yeah, I don't think we've, I mean, I don't remember any complaints recently, but this is just a way to have something in place if this were to be an issue in the future, so, something.
Because you gotta think about enforcement.
Yeah.
So it has to be extreme to where one of you guys has to come out and enforce this, otherwise you don't want to spend your time doing it.
Yeah, the other thing too is zoning violations go to the property owner. And if it's, if the truck is just sitting on the roadway, then there are other ways to deal with that, not necessarily through zoning or zoning codes. And so, you know, again, that's why we're focusing on the operating on private property portion.
Yeah. So that's, the question is, you don't care how long one stays on private property?
As long as they're in the proper location, I, I...
Yeah.
Okay.
To me, I, that's fine.
I'm sure the homeowners association stores too probably driving some trucks around. I, I, I'm curious, not a zoning story, but I talked about that they have inspections and so, who's responsible for the health inspections of sanitation inspections of food trucks?
The health district, you know, and the, the fire department also does inspections.
I was just curious.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Not that this has ever happened, but what if somebody's got a food truck and they just pull up on the public right of way in front of a house or in front of a, a business that did not invite them?
It would be treated as if a car parked there.
Yeah, so we, we, we just don't really care unless they're causing some kind of a public nuisance or disturbance.
Yeah.
Opportunity.
Capitalism at its best.
Yes, yes. Got a better hamburger than McDonald's, I'll pull up in the lot.
All right. So five point zero five is a garden center, essentially just saying for garden centers, outdoor storage of merchandise or equipment need to be screened from the roadway.
So does that mean we're doing away with, at one time we had that little thing that if you had outdoor storage displays, you had to be zoned industrial? And there was, Dennis knows what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so you're the Home Depot, Myers, Walmart.
The Krogers, the Giant Eagle, all of them. The Kroger outdoor displays, and I think we forced them to take those out and...
Yeah, and, and that is, it's a slightly different issue. This is specifically for the garden centers. We do have a, a definition of outdoor storage, which is, you know, merchandise for sale.
Clarity for those situations, as opposed to having to amend the development plan or something like that.
So, yeah.
We had to do that a couple of times.
I'm just trying to steer away from the issues of the past that Dennis so fondly remembers.
This would help, this would help.
Okay.
Just to clarify, if Lowe's or Home Depot has their garden center, outdoor, like typically throughout summer, they have all of their merchandise, like plants and all those outdoors, not, not inside the screen section?
Well, Home Dep, yeah, it depends. I mean, Home Depot did come here for, to have specific regulations on how they were going to handle their outdoor storage, so that, that would, I would, I don't think that would apply here because they have their own unique set of standards. But if there were a new type of construction or a new business that came in with, with outdoor storage or out, I guess a garden center, this would, these standards would apply. But right now, Home Depot has their own set of standards for that.
Okay. I think there is one, I forget where it is, they provide gravel for homes and they have all of that lying outside, so.
Ohio Mulch.
Ohio Mulch, yes.
That's a fun one.
Yeah, I don't want to talk about Ohio Mulch.
Now, I mean, I think a lot of this is anything new moving forward.
Yeah.
Oh, so it does not apply, apply to them?
Because so many of our commercial properties are in existing planned districts, the restrictions of those planned districts would take precedence over.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Good question.
All right. So five point zero six is home occupations, which as some of you have served on the BCA in the past, you may remember, home, home occupations are largely kind of in regular parlance, we call them home-based businesses. This is a little bit different in terms of how we have it set up in our current code, where we, we classify things in different ways in the proposed text. And so basically, in our current code, we don't have any distinctions between what we call major and minor home occupations, where technically speaking, if you're, even if you're, you know, just running a business out of your home that's a telework business, then you should probably technically have to come in to the BCA and get a conditional use for home occupation. We're looking at changing that a little bit, just, you know, with telework and, and things changing, I think it makes sense to have kind of minor home occupations versus major home occupations. The minor home occupations would not need a conditional use, but the major home occupations would. So you can see on that chart there, you know, types of minor home occupations, things like, you know, real estate agents, insurance agents, you know, just working out of your home where you don't necessarily have, you know, customer traffic coming into your house, you shouldn't necessarily have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals and, and get a conditional use for that. But there are certainly, you know, those types of home-based businesses where that may make sense, where you, you know, you do have customers coming in, you know, if you're doing sales, if you're having a barber shop, if you're, you know, setting up a, you know, some kind of professional office where you're gonna have people coming and going, daycare center, things like that, that would require that essentially, that level of additional scrutiny. And then there's a few, you can see on that chart that prohibited that, you know, we just don't want to have home-based businesses for, you know, auto repair, things like that. Yes, Christine?
All right. So I noticed under major home occupations, you have a bed and breakfast. Is that like an Airbnb or a vacation rental by owner or whatever term you want to use?
So, no. And this, we, we talked a little bit about this back in the fall, where we have definitions in this draft code that separates out a bed and breakfast versus a short-term rental.
Okay.
And so bed and breakfast, we would regulate short-term rental. We kind of landed on not regulating through zoning at this time.
I'm surprised the lawyer's office is not in a minor.
Yeah, I, these are, I mean, I think, these are examples, if you look at the, if you look at the standards, you know, it's shall now, if a minor is considered if it's not generating in-person traffic. So yeah, if you are an attorney and you work out of your home office and you don't generate, oh, your clients don't go there or something, then that would be...
Yeah, and so in, in full disclosure, I, you know, I did mention at the beginning that I had kind of been revising, doing some revisions and hadn't shared the right full document with you all yet on a call with Julie a few months ago. We did actually discuss this and we were looking at revising this table to, instead of saying, you know, these, you know, a real estate sales agent office is definitely minor versus a lawyer's office, which is definitely major, just instead of having those categories explicitly defined, to just define it to descriptions of the characteristics. So if it's, you know, if it doesn't have the in-person traffic, therefore it is minor. If it does have the in-person traffic or employees, ergo, it is major and requires...
I think that's a good idea. This is too open for interpretation, so...
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I think the, the in-person traffic would be reasonable, the question becomes, what is that number? Because I, you know, as a, you know, whether you're going to see your financial planner, oftentimes you want to sit down and look at them face to face, if they're doing that out of their home, sometimes insurance, real estate, so, you know, I don't know what that face-to-face story would be, you know, maybe no more than three visitors or two visitors a day or something like that.
Yeah, and so, Michelle, if you can scroll up just slightly, please. There is kind of a, a list of things we would use to make that determination, just the, the location, any, you know, physical changes to the property, anticipated demand of visitors, percentage of the floor area of the structure that we would be dedicated to that home occupation, equipment, levels of noise, dust, vibration, glare, odors, and the number of employees.
I think the two issues that are absolutely enforceable are, yep, traffic and anything wanting signage. I think it's ridiculous to have, well, you can only have this square footage in your house. Not enforceable. No one's gonna go and knock on your door, hey, let me measure your workspace. That's not going to happen.
Only the IRS.
I know that was in our code before and I came up in BCA and it's like, look, no one's coming in, just forget about that. But signage and whatever amount of traffic, I think those are the issues. Or how many employees beyond, beside yourself? If you have employees.
Or contractors. It's easy to work around, they're, they're, they're not, they're not my employees, they're independent contractors, they just do their work here.
So I have a very unique situation question. You mentioned... You mentioned automobile-related businesses. What about limousine rental running out of your garage? So you have two or three or four limos, you maintain them. You have, the clients never come to your house. Send the limos to wherever the client, they pick them up, drive them wherever they want to, drop them off, come back, maintain the limos at your garage space.
I would say that's a major.
You say that's what?
It's a major or it's allowed?
But the amount of space you're using for it and there's equipment involved.
Say it again?
I mean, I think it's a major.
Are they parked outside? Are they, or are they in the garage?
Obviously, they must have one outside.
They're either outside or in the garage. And I actually do know someone who does that.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I think that's a major and I think we also have to think of, you know, a major would go through a conditional use and that would involve a public hearing. I think your fellow neighbors would want to know that you're doing something like that. That's my opinion, but.
Yeah, and, you know, I think every, every one of these cases is unique. It's hard to kind of nail everything down because you can also get, you know, somebody who works for Spectrum who maybe just takes their van home at the end of the day and parks it in their driveway. In a sense, you know, how do you define that ahead of time? How do you make that distinction?
Taking your work car, work vehicle home, that is different. But I'm talking about like five vehicles.
Same.
And would that be, so I want to know the opinion. Is that okay?
And realistic, what you just described is more similar to, I mean, that's more of a gray area in terms of, is it truly a home occupation itself at all? Or you're, you know, it lends itself more towards a landscaping company out, you know, we're operating out of a house of like, we don't do any work on-site, but our, it's just a facility that we use for storage. Like we, you know, we store our trucks here, we store our lawn mowers here. A construction company running out of somebody's house as well. We might get deliveries here, which is a bit of a, kind of a square peg round hole that frequently, and those types of situations frequently come up. I've never had someone talk about a limo business. That is very interesting. But again, that.
Because there is no complaints because it's much more cleaner.
Sure, sure.
Right?
But that is, yeah, a fleet of limos. That just, it just, again, in my mind, it lends itself more towards.
Put it out on the street, we got problems.
Right, I mean, I guess that's true, yeah, you put it on the street, there's nothing that anybody could do about it. Interesting.
If there is a way to address that, that would be helpful because I, we've gotten complaints before about multiple vehicles, thinking that there's a business or something. And if that's something we can address, I think that's important to do that. Not saying it's denied, it just has to go through a certain process, so.
But this is not attractively enforceable, so. If they're already operating, then it's not attractively enforceable.
Again, it's basically case specific.
Yeah.
And you have, you have existing home occupation language.
Yes.
I can't remember, it may, it may fall under.
I think it falls under the existing one if that, if that scenario is something that's truthful.
Well, I do remember we had an incident with a automobile repair oil change in Lewis Center that was brought up. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, and for any auto repair, we had a lot of people in the room. It just wasn't proper.
Yeah, well, there were concerns about the disposal of hazardous material.
There was all kinds of issues with that, even if it's, yeah.
Yeah.
I know a guy in Lewis Center who flips cars for a living. He buys used cars, cleans them up. He's not doing real mechanical or bodywork on them. Mostly it's detailing. He does it in front of his house with a car parked on the street. I don't think he's ever had more than two at a time. Nobody cares. It's clean, it's quiet. But it's definitely a business operating, kind of like, kind of like the limo service, in a sense.
Yeah, and I think it's important to keep in mind, our existing home occupation language pretty much says, if you have anything there, you need to apply for it. Now, whether or not people do that is a different story, but this at least is giving the flexibility if it's minor versus major.
If I'm selling insurance out of my house and I'm not putting a sign out front, does anybody really care?
Right, and I think that would be, in the news code, I think that would be considered a minor.
If I put a dozen desks in my full basement and I am running basically an insurance sales boiler room out of my house, the, all those independent contractors using those desks are giving me a cut, they're parking on the street in my neighborhood in front of my house, right? That seems like a whole other level of thing than just my selling insurance out of my spare bedroom.
Not all of this is going to be enforceable because we just don't know what everybody's doing. But if we come across a situation, there is regulations that we have to work with.
It gives at least a framework to.
Yeah.
In a general sense, are we on board with this approach of allowing, you know, lower impact things to not go before the full BCA and major things to require a public hearing?
So let's say, because generally I don't have a problem with that, but let's say like the limo, if it's one or two and they're not blocking the road, nobody cares. But if they decide to expand to five and then all of a sudden it becomes a neighborhood issue, what is the neighborhood recourse? Do they call and complain to your office of, hey?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, again, to Julie's earlier point, you know, with the, with the limo parking, with, you know, vehicle parking, that may or may not be a home occupation that may be using a residentially zoned property for commercial purposes as, you know, as a commercial parking lot, not necessarily a home, you know, a home-based business.
I was going to say, but how does that change? What if they took the five limos and parked them over by the park like that mobile thing that was parked there forever?
That's why they thank you for doing that.
Yeah, you know, I.
That was hard.
Business, we pick it up and go and every day we move, but we parked the five right back there.
There is some things the township could do with like no parking signs, but that is no parking for any type of vehicle. Yeah, I think parking on a public right of way is extremely challenging to enforce.
I started to say, I shouldn't say that. That thing just bothered me every day being there.
I think that was, yeah, that was a lot.
So that would be considered a major. As far as new?
Probably, but again, everything is case specific.
Yeah, it would either, either be a major or it would be a commercial use attempting to operate in a residential district, which is not a home occupation, which is you're using your property incorrectly or in violation of the zoning resolution.
And Dennis, to your point earlier on signage, if they get a home occupation, then they have to follow the signage rules, which we'll get into later when we get into signage. All right. Moving on, five point zero seven is mobile homes, basically saying that they can use it for an ag use or they can use it in the FR one district for farm use essentially, which is basically mirrors our current, current practice. Five point zero eight is private non-commercial garages. We talked about this a fair amount again in the fall. Just, you know, I think we have some cleanup to do with our language on, you know, what is a, what is a non-commercial garage? You know, what does it look like if somebody was renting out garage space on their property? So I think we covered a fair amount of that, that topic a few months ago, so I don't know that we need to repeat it tonight. But I do have it on my list too. We'll, we'll kind of tackle that definition and make sure that it lines up with what we want to see. Five point zero nine is swimming pools, which there are a few things to talk about here, so interested in this discussion. Two things that are, well, I guess they're related things. The big thing here is the controlled access, this question of, does a swimming pool, current regulations in Orange Township is if you have a swimming pool, it has to be fully enclosed. There has to be a fence that goes all the way around it, that's at least five feet in height. Yeah, those of you who have served on the BCA know this well, but it has, the fence has to, fully surround it, has to be five feet in height. A lot of the HOA requirements for fences are four feet. So in this draft code, we do change that from five feet to four feet, so there's only a four-foot fence required. However, the Delaware County Building Safety Department for swimming pools, they do not require a fence. You have to have a fence or an auto-locking cover on the pool. It's one or the other. Is there any, what do you all think? Should a pool require a fence or would a safety cover be sufficient to prevent uncontrollable?
Who's checking the safety covers? Is that going to be something you all going to go around and look at safety covers or who?
Well, because the county requires it, it would be through the county's, the county's building permit process, they would regulate that.
Probably your insurance company's going to be checking for it. But I remember we had this issue during COVID of what is considered a swimming pool versus a waiting pool.
I do, I do want to talk about that.
Okay, thank you. That, that's one thing I think we need to address of one person's waiting pool is another person's swimming pool.
You know, the safety, of course, from the fence perspective is, okay, it said it and forget it, so to speak, right? The employing of the lock feature, and someone doesn't do it puts people at risk.
Yeah.
Especially kids.
Yeah.
I was going to say, so something, and I know some of you were on the BCA and are now on the zoning commission and so I think at least one of you sat on that when the township did have someone come in and request a variance so they could have a pool cover. And the BCA denied that variance request and said, nope, you've got to have the fence. That was around the time that the, that Delaware County changed the standards, the, on the building side of things, that they said, look, you can have either or. What I can say, just from a trend perspective, I've seen a few townships, while not happy about it, they have changed their regulations to say you have to have one or the other. And some have, again, from a, you mentioned safety and that's kind of why I started talking, that, you know, at the end of the day, zoning is not necessarily safety in terms of, you know, you're, you're a grown adult, you have your own pool, you need to make sure that it, that you're taking care of your property. And so I've had, I've had some townships kind of go that direction. I've also had some folks say, I just can't, you know, the fence is a physical barrier. The fence will always be there and, you know, things happen with pool covers. Just, it's fine for other places, but.
So the county regulates the safety aspect of this?
Absolutely, yes.
And that is, that, that's an option, yeah. If we wanted to just say the pool has to comply with building and safety standards or I don't know.
A pool fence or a self-locking, and we've got sample language if you wanted to address pool covers. We have some sample language. But in terms of temperature check, I think that's more of.
Yeah.
So I thought zoning's overarching goal was general safety, general welfare, right?
Which is true, that is true. And I did say, I was like, safety is recognized. And so maybe from, again, from a.
I guess there's like another level to it.
Oh, yeah, another level of like safety to your neighbors type of thing, of like, you know, personal liability and that type of thing. Again, it's, I've had, I've had different townships go different ways. And if any of that information is helpful, that's the only purpose of mentioning that.
Yeah, I mean, I think hearing that the Board of Zoning Appeals has denied safety covers, I don't think they've approved any since I've, like, ever. So it's, the fence has always been a requirement.
All it takes is one accident, right? So is the third leading cause of kids' deaths in the United States is unsecured pools.
And it's a, yeah.
I'm really, I have two very young kids. I was thinking of putting a pool in my backyard and I chose not to because of looking at that stats. If you looked at, say, let's say July fourth weekend typically is when kids run around backyards with firecrackers and all of that, it's typically after sunset. It's not safe, not having a fence around a pool. I strongly feel about it.
Yeah, and during the BCA hearings, a lot of people have come out for the meetings. It's, to your, to your point, we've heard from many residents that have said the same thing. And I think that's why the Board of Zoning Appeals has denied it over and over again. So, you know, I think lessening it to one foot is something, I guess, because that's what the HOAs have.
Four feet is enough, I think, for kids.
So I don't think, I mean, we're not.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily advocating that we change, but if the commission felt strongly in the other direction, then we could, we could look at that.
I mean, in general, we don't seem to be very fond of chain link fences.
No, this is, chain link would not be allowed for that. It would have to be a fully.
Probably wood, vinyl or aluminum.
Yeah.
Yeah, something that you can't go through.
Okay. And so to clarify, who says right now, four feet versus five feet?
Our code says five feet currently.
HOAs.
HOAs have done four feet.
Yeah, HOAs sometimes limit the height of the fence you can put around your property.
Which results in those fence applications coming before the BCA because they can't meet both the HOA standards and the township's standards.
And we have seen the Board of Zoning Appeals approve the four feet because of the HOA.
Yeah, because they have an existing fence that's four feet and then they want to build a swimming pool and then our zoning regulations say, well, you have to have a five-foot fence and then, you know, it doesn't make sense to tear out that existing fence.
So at least the four feet would be consistent.
So HOAs can create a rule that violates the zoning rule?
They can try.
By saying, you know, you can't have a fence over four feet and we require one over five feet.
They have to go through the variance each time, yeah.
They, so the, you, HOA ID restrictions and zoning resolutions, the property owner has to get approval from both bodies. And sometimes there are situations where you can be in compliance with one and not the other. And if you can't be in compliance with both, then in this situation, then you don't get your pool.
Yeah, doesn't happen.
Okay, so I do want to pivot slightly to that, that definition of what is a swimming pool and kind of what would trigger that, that safety barrier. So I'm going to flip back, I'm going to, because we do have in our definition section, swimming pool, so section three point one nine for me is.
Yeah, I want to see that, that fence and swimming pool thing, as I'm just thinking about it, slightly different between, is it a in-ground pool versus one that sits publicly?
Yeah, I, so I've had a couple of residents come up to me and, because they're, they're keeping in touch with this process and somebody was like, if I buy a pool at Costco that's three feet deep and I want to take, just have it out for the summer, am I required to build a five-foot fence? Technically, yes, right now, right now, right?
Yes, technically, our definition of, of pool, right, well, it's, we don't have a definition for a pool. Yes, technically, our, our definition of, of pool, right, well, it's, we don't have a definition for a pool, we have a definition for water impoundment.
Yeah, so if you buy a temporary pool at Costco and you just want it out for the summer, you would have to build a five-foot fence around it.
Yeah, yeah, so to me, if the, if the above-ground pool is high enough, so to speak, that a kid can't fall into it, then I don't know if a fence would be necessary. But an in-ground pool where a kid could be running in the middle of the night, if they're running in the middle of the night, you got to build the ground, they're going to hit the, hit the side of it and they'll know, well, damn, something's there, right? Versus a flat one, so I don't know if we could differentiate that to.
I, I think that's a good thought. So Michelle's pulled up our definition of swimming pool on the screen there. So really, the, the key is in terms of dimensions, a depth of at least eighteen inches or a surface area exceeding one hundred square feet, which some of those residents have reached out to us and said, well, that's, that's too small. So our current, our current zoning resolution language says that temporary and the collapsible inflatable pools are not subject to the fence requirements. This faces it on the dimensions. So I don't know if you all feel that the best way is to increase those dimensions or say that collapsible pools are exempt, inflatable collapsible temporary pools are exempt. Interested to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, because I think it's difficult if you have like the, one of those collapsible inflatable pools, because some of them are more than eighteen inches high, they might be like two feet high or something like that, or maybe max three feet. And to have somebody have to put a fence around what I would say is a kiddie pool, as opposed to just putting a cover on top of it.
Well, and that's something we can do, you know, temporary pools must have a cover of some sort.
I think it needs to be dimensions, because be, got to be realistic about this stuff. Somebody got a kiddie pool, they're not coming into zoning believing they need to put a fence, they're just not, that's out of sight, out of mind.
The challenge with dimensions is if somebody wants to go an inch bigger.
Exactly. I think it needs to be based on dimensions, either how big it is, how high it is, how deep it is. And then, and then somebody may say, okay, I may need to check with zoning and see what this is the size of my structure. The kiddie pools, no one's coming in, even if it doesn't, even if you've written the code and says you have to have a fence.
Okay, so I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing dimensions and then I'm hearing just put a cover on something temporary.
I'm thinking about what's enforceable, and I'm also thinking about somebody who's putting in a pool, what are they likely to do? Why are they likely to think about it? Are they likely to forget about zoning? Because most people have no idea we exist. That, that's just a fact of the matter. Okay, so, so then, then what you, what, because what you're really trying to do is, let's regulate things that we can, that are going to be meaningful to somebody at some point.
Yeah.
And not worry about the stuff nobody's thinking about, the kiddie pools.
A temporary safety hazard is a safety hazard.
Well, firecrackers are safety hazards. It's, it's okay. I think kiddie pools are okay. Collapsible kiddie pools should be okay. They don't even need a cover. It should be fine. I mean, you cannot run into them directly.
So I mean, we could kind of do it both, like if it's a, if it's a dimension of this, a cover shall be required, or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also the other, larger pools with dimensions needs stairs or something to get in. You're not just climbing in, that's going to have a structure, you know? So then either you've made it so that, you know, that structure can't be, it's got to be locked or some other situation. And then, then you got, it has to be something substantial, a pool of some substantial size. That's the stuff that I, my opinion, don't worry about.
No, no, it's good. I think this is something we could work with.
Well, and, and the assumption, I think, is being made that we're trying to prevent somebody from accidentally falling into a pool, right?
General safety, yes.
Yes.
Well, I think the other thing is also that.
Now, I'm going to assume that many of you have been children. You got a neighbor that's got a pool.
I wasn't my neighbor.
They're away from the, they're away for the weekend. You know they're away for the weekend. You're not going to throw a pool party in somebody else's backyard? I mean, when you're eight, ten, twelve, you know, get a bunch of people together and, and, and do it? There needs to be a, a fence or a cover. I mean, but if it's only two feet tall, probably not that big a deal. But it's real easy for kids to get themselves in, in trouble doing something stupid on purpose.
We cannot, we cannot limit every circumstance, but it's the idea that if somebody is building an in-ground pool, not having a fence is a problem.
Yeah, to me, the, the drawing line is, is it in-ground or is it outside of the ground? And if it's above the ground, I don't need you to put up a fence. If it's in-ground pool.
Well, if it's a permanent above-ground, I would say we, you should probably put a fence.
No, I think if it's a permanent above-ground, I don't think they're sending these fences. That's my thought. I mean, because I see some, you know, in the Home and Garden, at the Home and Garden show, wherever they have.
I mean, most HOAs don't even allow it, so it's not going to be like a problem.
Above-ground pools are only allowable in the FR one district.
Yeah, which I agree with.
Nobody has the space for a, a permanent above-ground pool because you've destroyed whatever that property is. And no one has that kind of yard space for those. You're seeing those in acres and acres of space.
I think we can find common ground to this, though.
Semi-related, my wife has a koi pond in the backyard. It's above-ground, it's about three feet tall, holds about six hundred and fifty gallons of water. It's a swimming pool for fish.
Is it intended for use by persons for the purpose of immersion, partial immersion, or swimming?
No, it's not.
Then you're good.
Not intended for any human being to ever step foot in it.
The definition, yeah, it's not a swimming pool.
All right. If, if she sets it down into the ground, which I've asked her to do, does that change things? Does that become an in-ground swimming pool?
If it's intended, yeah.
Whether that's her intent or not?
Intended for use by persons or, and, and I think the purpose of that language, because there could be a situation of your wife deciding she wants to swim with her koi. I mean, that's where facts, interpretation, and, and Robin and staff going out and making a determination. And if, if someone were in violation of, look, is this a swimming pool, is this not a swimming pool? Staff makes that determination that the koi pond is or is not intended for use for immersion, then staff can make the determination if someone's in violation. If the property owner believes that staff is wrong, then they can appeal that decision to the BZA. And then the BZA will make the decision of, is that truly a swimming pool or not?
Yeah, because if, if she decides to set a, a, a koi pond in the ground and decides to make it five feet deep and of significant size, it's not designed or intended for immersion by a person. It doesn't make it any less of a safety hazard from kids running through the backyard at night.
But then by the same token, then any sort of detention or, excuse me, retention pond in a community has that issue.
Yes.
I mean, yes, I have a neighbor who does have like a koi pond. Her yard is fenced to keep it extra safe.
Well, I'm just saying, there's koi ponds.
You're going to get that anywhere from a retention pond.
Well, yeah, I mean, when they were putting in Cheswick Village, one of the issues is that they wanted to remove the fence around the detention pond. And it was decided that they could and in fact probably should do that, and they did. I mean, I think it creates a major safety hazard, but that was, that was the decision that was made at the time. So, yeah, I mean, we can decide, we don't consider that a significant enough safety hazard to worry about. I just wanted to bring the point up for discussion.
That's an excellent point, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, oh, sorry, Les.
No, go ahead.
I, I think it's just, it's impossible to catch every scenario during this. But at least we can try to modi, we're modifying the code to, to capture what we consistently find as issues. That is one. Today is the, having the five-foot fence is a challenge in our community with the HOA's requirement at four feet. Yeah, I mean, if we got ten complaints about koi ponds being too deep, then, yeah, I think we'll see it in our zoning code soon. So, I mean, I, I just, this is ever-changing, we can always modify this. But I think our goal is to try to, to catch as many situations that we are aware of that are issues and reflect it into correcting it in our zoning code, so.
If it's an enclosed structure that's not a fence, is that still okay, meaning?
Say that again, if it's.
What the requirements are.
Yeah, so the, the rule is that exterior walls can count as part of that.
Okay.
As long as it prevents controlled access.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So moving on, we'll keep going on Article Five. So next section is Section five point ten, sexually oriented businesses. And I don't, this is one of those, I don't know that we need to have a whole lot of discussion on these. Julie and I have talked about some additional language in here, just to tighten it up in terms of higher revised code definitions. But obviously, this is a type of use that we are restricting to the best of our ability.
Yeah, so one of my comments was check with legal on, on, I, I thought there was some new legislation that specifically in regards to non-therapeutic massage.
Yes.
So I didn't know if that our section covers that. And I don't know if you know enough to elaborate to us, because I'm not even sure what, I just made a note of that when I saw it in some legislation changes.
So that, you're, you are correct, there were some changes. And there, in terms of non-therapeutic massages, it created a, a process in terms of like permitting, which is outside of zoning.
Okay.
But I think that that is, that's something that we should just cross-check, just to make sure that, regardless of whatever the new legislation is and how it impacts zoning, let's make sure it, it, it works. So, so non-therapeutic, I, I'm, so give me just a second, my brain is, therapeutic massage has basically like a medical purpose of some sort.
Like a chiropractor.
Like a chiropr, exactly. Or like athletic, you know, athletic massage, that type of thing. A non-therapeutic massage, it could just be like a spa, like a spa, just a nice relaxing massage, that type of thing. And it, one of those things where I'm like, I wonder what caused this change? You know, legislation usually has like a reason, like what were you trying to do here? Again, I understand that some massage parlors can have nefarious intentions. But the fact that it also covered very much just a, a spa massage type of thing, that's a non-therapeutic massage.
Yeah, I was just thinking like a massage inn or something like that. I don't think that people go there for therapy per se. They go there to get just a massage, I'm tired. Maybe that is therapy, I don't know. But, okay.
Yeah. All I'm saying is, I just want to make sure that's kind of accounted for with the new legislation.
Yep.
Regulations, I guess.
So I have a question, sort of related to this. Do we have a separate section for like adult uses like?
Adult entertainment?
Yes.
I, yeah, did we already go through that?
So we talked about on the use table, it's basically, I think it was a conditional use in the industrial zone, if I recall correctly.
Okay, but it's separate from the sexual-oriented business, so that would be for like pool halls, gambling parlors, games of chance, whatever you call them.
Yeah, I know, and I, I know our current code has like a whole chapter on it. But, yeah, I think, just seeing to your point, it is defined in our, in our, in the definitions.
Can you go down?
Because I would suggest maybe that, well, it's up to y'all. We have a thing that says that you cannot have one sexually oriented business next to another one or close to another one. Do we want to also have that you can't have one adult business next to another adult business?
I don't know why, why not, because if they are all clapped together in one area, isn't that better than having like?
I don't know, I'm just saying, it's, you, you, you could either disperse them or you have them like a red light district, but that's the question, do you really want a red light district?
If you put them all together, it often ends up being a drain on the sheriff's department, I'll put it that way. Where there are frequent problems that you don't get if they're more dispersed.
Makes sense.
Yeah, but on the other hand, you got to be careful about the language because if you don't have two adult businesses near each other, you probably don't want them near an adult entertainment establishment either. I mean, it should be kind of an either or, you know, you got to be X number of feet away from either this or that, regardless of which of those two types of establishments it is. Just a suggestion.
So we did, Michelle pulled up the definition of adult entertainment business there on the screen. So you can see those types of businesses, that it's a little bit different than kind of the, the skill games, you know, different. Things like that, so we are really talking about sexually oriented businesses.
And right now, we are not, we don't allow it anywhere, except for it does require a special use or a conditional use permit in commercial and the flex employment zones.
So far, what you've said has kept Orange Township essentially free of all those things. And, and I would continue to run down that path.
Yeah, I mean, you're not allowed to prohibit it entirely, but you can make it a bit of a challenge to get there.
Make it, continue to make it a challenge.
Yes. And I, sexually oriented businesses, is that a use in our?
Well, that's what I was going to say, because it sounds like the sexually oriented business is basically almost the same as an adult entertainment.
It's a subset, looks like it's a subset.
Or something like that, so.
Well.
Yeah, we'll look at, we'll look at that. I think that's one of those, we just need to make sure that this language matches the definition language.
And, and.
Thank you for that.
Well, if somebody wants to open up a billiard parlor and they want to say no one under eighteen is allowed, does that make them an adult entertainment business?
No.
I wouldn't think so either.
Yeah, somebody who does play billiards. I can tell you, not adult entertainment.
And I don't watch a picture of theater, like R-rated movies, like there are several. Now, every movie is a R-rated movie, I guess, so.
Okay, we, we'll work with, we'll work on that one.
Yeah, so the definitions are consistent.
So, yeah, we'll tighten that up. Moving on, five point eleven is telecommunications towers and facilities. This is something that I'd be expanding. Essentially, this is another thing where it's actually federal legislation kind of tells us what we can and can't regulate when it comes to telecommunications towers. By and large, we can't limit, or we can't, can't prohibit them, but we can put certain restrictions on them in residential districts, which we actually don't have in this draft at all. So Julie and I will work together on drafting up some, some restrictions and standards for what they look like in residential districts.
Yeah, because our current code does have, like, I don't, I don't really understand it, it confuses me. But it, there is a process when it comes to the, if they're in residential, I think it needed to be cleaned up anyways. But I think the intent was to have some form of regulations with it, but.
It's very, so, so basically that section of the, what is that, five nineteen point two one one basically says that townships can't regulate zoning when it comes to telecommunications towers. And then there's an exception, this long exception, with respect to telecommunications towers in residential districts, you can adopt regulations, however, they don't come into play unless someone wants to put a tower in and then, and then. However, they don't come into play unless someone wants to put a tower in, and then, and they have to follow this process that permits someone, a neighbor or that type of thing, to complain. And if they complain to the township, then the zoning, then it starts to kick in, and there's a hearing and that sort of thing. It is a very, I mean, realistically, it's very unique in terms of your, of just how zoning works. Um, but, but that's to, to Michelle's point, and, and Robbins, if you don't have any standards in here, if someone complains, then the township's basically like, well, it's going in. Um, but this will at least, if, if you put some standards in, that will at least, um, give the township some teeth in the event something pops up in a residential district.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's not much for, there, there's not a whole lot we can do, but if, whatever we can do, we'll, we'll include it.
What about height cosmetics? I mean.
Yeah, I don't think.
They make them that are, if you, if you, if you have bad eyesight, look sorta kinda like a tree. Um, you know, so it's, there may be some language that we could put in there, that they have to be, uh, you know, uh, disguised and, and camouflaged in, in some way, you know, you can't put in one that's two hundred feet tall.
Yeah, the, the problem with this, with this specific section is very unique. Um, to the extent the township can put restrictions, again, we're, we're working on that. But they don't even come into play unless it's in a residential district and someone complains. Or, and someone basically contests.
Yeah.
The process to begin with. So there could be a situation of it, it just goes into a residential district, and if nobody issues a, a contest, um, then it just goes through, so.
And, and the contest has to be at the time they're planning to put it up.
Yep.
Once it's up.
Right.
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any communication requirements before it comes up?
So the, the property, or, yeah, the property owner who wants to put up the telecommunications, telecommunications tower, has to go through a process, a notice process, um, and at that point, that's when it, it, um, you know, the, the relevant parties have the opportunity to submit a, a protest, a challenge. At that point, it's set for a hearing, the township sets it for a hearing. Um, and then the township's ability to make a decision on whether or not the tower goes in is subject to what's in the zoning resolution. So you can see, kinda you walk down the path of, there could be a situation where there's nothing that can be done, and the township might not even know, or, or this process might not even be invoked. But again, to the extent it can be regulated and restricted.
Oh, but if Spectrum wants to put a tower in my backyard, in, in, in their easement.
They would not, they should notify you.
Right. If you're in a residential district, yeah, and it meets the definition of telecommunications tower.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm trying to be.
Alright, but yeah, we'll look at, we'll look at adding some, some letters in there, you probably won't actually come to koi, but we'll, we'll look at it. Uh, moving on, 5.12 is temporary structures and trailers. Um, this is, we do have language in our current code regarding these that are kind of in each, uh, individual district and zone. Uh, but this is basically for, uh, temporary construction trailers, uh, and temporary sales trailers, um, for, uh, for conducting sales or leasing activities for, for big subdivisions. Um, so we will permit those, um, they'll have to go through a permitting process, uh, they have to be removed. There's some kind of very basic standards on there, um, but it's, it's not really a change from our current practice.
Has anybody ever violated those in the current practice?
Uh, uh, we actually get quite a few divergences on tempor- temporary trailers, um.
Because it's a conditional use in some zones, and so they, you know, when developments come in, they wanna just be able to do it without a, you know.
Yeah.
Additional approvals. Um, I mean, the violations that we get from them are people putting them in without a permit. It's not that they're necessarily violating standards.
But this is, does this apply to sales trailers too?
Yes.
Yeah, cause our code doesn't allow sales trailers.
Uh, it's a conditional use.
Okay.
Or, no, you're right, it, it does prohibit them.
I mean, I guess you could pa- apply for a use variance, I, I thought our, I thought our code prohibited them, but.
Yeah, I don't feel allowed sales trailers, but you know, they, you always have the model homes and such, and there's.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And those are always restrictions.
But I'm assuming this is.
Has to when those close, and any construction trailers, when those leave. And we've had so much of that over the last twenty years. Has anybody ever violated any of that, any extreme thing where it's been an issue?
I mean, not really, but since everything is a planned district, they usually ask for a modification to allow it.
A little longer or whatever.
They even have one. Yeah, because.
Well, yeah.
I, I don't have the current code in front of me, I apologize. I just remember trailers have been a divergence request in the past.
Yeah, I'd say in general, they haven't really caused any issues.
No.
Apart from conflicting occasionally with our zoning rules.
Is the new code different than what the old one was with respect to this?
It's just more permissive, uh, in terms of the standards, no.
So it doesn't define it as a sales or a construction, it's just a temporary trailer?
Yeah, I, I think the sales is to stay prohibited as it always.
Okay.
Was.
Or if we're always gonna approve them.
We do always approve them.
Well, not the sales.
No, we, we, we have, and I'm sorry, Dennis, we have approved them through a planned district. So like ECONA example, they want a leasing sales trailer.
Okay, I can see that.
Yeah. Now, it's gone by the time, you know, the model home is there, but.
I can see that initially. I would just have to have a time limit.
Right, yeah, and that's why we make them get permits.
Yeah, it would be six, it would be six months.
Yeah. Then we know when they go in and when they're supposed to go in.
Is that any?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, as long as they're temporary.
Yeah. Um, 5.13 is substantially similar uses, um, this would be, uh, new, um, but it's, it's basically allowing for some flexibility, uh, because it, you know, it's tried to be pretty comprehensive in terms of the, the use table, uh, and you know, this use is allowed in this zone, this use is not allowed in this zone, um, but we're not going to capture every use just as, you know, technology in the workforce, uh, evolves. Uh, so what this section would do would give, uh, us as staff the ability to say, okay, well, this is, you know, some new use, you know, some emerging technology five years from now that we hadn't even thought of, but it's similar enough to, you know, this other thing that we're just going to classify it, uh, as this. And then, you know, as, as Julie had said earlier, uh, if staff makes that determination and somebody doesn't like it, they can appeal that, uh, to the board of certain appeals.
I think that's a good idea.
Um, alright, and then, uh, 5.14 is the solar facilities, um, you know, we, again, we had talked about this rather extensively in the fall. I don't know that we need to get back into it tonight. Um, we have looked at some language that we'll be incorporating into kind of the, the next round of revisions. Um, but I, I think we captured your feedback, uh, by and large, a few months back.
It just seems like, oh, I mean, it's a lot, does it have to be a lot?
If, I mean, if we, realistically, I don't think we're going to see a lot of the, you know, farm-scale solar in Orange Township, but it, it doesn't hurt to include the language, I, I think is the gist of it.
You never know, because the technology is ever-evolving, and if it comes down to a point where a few panels can deliver enough energy, then yes, you might.
Yeah.
There is apparently a new technology that I'm really fascinated, surprised.
I do remember that.
So.
No, I, if, I mean, if it's, and I'm, I'm clueless on it, or I'm ignorant over the, uh, over this, so if, if this is important to include then, and we see it evolving and becoming more meaningful, then yeah, I think we'll, we'd be, we'll be ahead of the curve, so.
In a couple of weeks, I'll be at a conference in San Diego, I'll learn more.
Alright, so that brings us to the end of Article Five, um, which is all, kind of, again, all of our little special use categories that we have special restrictions for.
Did we put anything about wind or power?
No. No, we did not.
Do we have small wind facilities?
I think we have definitions for it, yeah.
I thought small wind was.
I thought we talked about wind.
Yeah, cause I think it's somewhere else.
Cause I thought small wind was acceptable, I mean, technically agricultural uses are using.
Um, I don't know, I can't remember guys.
There's, uh, I think it's a library somewhere in the general area, maybe, maybe Dublin, where they put in a, uh, a small wind, actually, it's a small solar thing, I'm sorry.
So, well, off of, uh, 270, um, there, where there's a row of auto dealerships by Sawmill.
Yeah.
There is a windmill that produces the electricity for the lights for those automobile dealerships, I believe.
Yeah, they've got a, a radio broadcast, uh, facility in there, I think they've got a Deleol VQ and a few others, broadcast from there, and it's all powered off the, uh, off that, that tower. Obviously, we don't want a tower, you know, windmill that size in a residential neighborhood. But a commercial area, I mean, who cares?
Or industrial.
Yeah.
Um, we can look into it.
Yeah, we can look into it, we do have, I, I think it would be covered under the definition of utility generation facility, uh, which we do have, uh, in our use table, uh, and that would be permitted in commercial and industrial. Conditional, conditional use in residential.
Not, 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 okay, so it's conditional in residential.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Robin, I don't know at this point, if you wanna do minutes and timeline?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, um, so, we'll put a pause on it there, we might circle back, but knowing some of you have some time restrictions, uh, let's go ahead and look at our minutes, uh, we do have a slew of them, which I'll.
Robin, we have our staff to pull, at least, staff.
Robin, do you want me to stay, or can I leave?
Yeah, no, you can stay.
You want me to, you want me to stay?
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, well, I would like to discuss the time, like, next steps with this project, if you, if you have a few minutes.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thanks.
And, and to be clear, but, you know, I, and Julie can correct me if I'm wrong, if, uh, uh, if you're ever absent for a meeting, you can still vote to approve those minutes, whether or not you were actually there, you don't, you don't have to abstain from that vote.
That's what I was gonna clarify, so, I trust that in my absence, those who are here did well, I give your comments.
Okay, so do we wanna discuss timeline first, then minutes?
Is that on your presentation?
Yeah, it was the last slide.
Okay. Oh, I guess I was supposed to do all this, oops, nope, okay.
No, wait, well, it was fine, we all just got through the one. Alright, so, again, uh, we kinda paused on this project for a little bit, again, due to the holidays, and we had, sent a lot of zoning applications, which, uh, some of which took multiple meetings, um, but do wanna, uh, get this moving again. Uh, you know, we, we may have some other zoning applications coming in the, in the next few months, I'm not expecting anything imminently, I'm not expecting anything terribly complicated, so there's a possibility that we could have other meetings, but at, at this time, we don't have anything else on the schedule. Uh, so, you know, kind of working backwards from other steps, and none of these dates are set in stone necessarily. Um, but I think we, if possible, we wanna try to button this up, uh, with you all, uh, by April, which is, uh, you know, we still have a fair amount to get through, uh, but it's, it's a balance between, you know, we wanna be thorough, but we also want to keep moving forward. Um, so I, I think three more meetings with you all is hopefully enough to get through, uh, the biggest chunks of what we wanna talk about. Um, and then, uh, we can take all that feedback, do kind of a, a final draft, um, and then look for some kind of recommendation, um, from you all possibly in April. So I, I had looked at some dates, and again, these don't necessarily have to be set in stone, we do need to set the next hearing date at least tonight. And then we can talk about the rest as we move forward, but first impressions, do these, do any of these dates look great or terrible?
Um, March twenty-fifth.
Spring break.
Is, exactly.
March twenty-fifth's out.
Yeah, it's spring break, so.
Yeah, and, and.
Those of us with kids will probably be spring breaking.
Yeah.
And I did ask Robin to dra- draft this timeline, I, I, I know that this has been a very long, big project, and the trustees are anxiously waiting for this to, new code to get adopted, so we just wanted to try to set some expectations and goals for each of these meetings. If, if we can get somewhat of a consensus that these dates are good, and at least Robin and his team know how, um, you know, their plan internally with this code moving forward would be very helpful.
Uh, with March, is, does March eleventh?
March eleventh is fine for me.
Eleventh is fine, eighteenth is also fine.
Yeah.
And what about March eighteenth? In general, is that, that would be two weeks in a row, but.
Yeah, I think that'll work too.
Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing the twenty-fifth is out.
Last is fine.
And that's good, that'll give you a little more window to edit stuff, so.
Alright, so we'll at least get March eleventh and the eighteenth on the calendar, and we can probably look at, dates beyond that, at that point, I know sometimes it's hard to plan out multiple months in advance.
Yeah, and if we do get an influx of applications, that could, that could change things, but we are, I'm gonna jinx it, we're, we're gonna have a little bit of a dry spell with applications, so I think this is the time, take advantage, the code. The districts and zones is a lot of text, but we've talked a lot about it already in regards to the uses and standards, so just keep that in mind when, when you're like, how the heck are we gonna review a hundred pages? We've done a lot of the discussion already.
So next up, we'll, we'll talk about our districts and zones, um, we can probably get through most of that in one meeting. Uh, Article 21, which is the general development standards, that one will probably take a while, um, because there's a lot in there in terms of the nitty-gritty on landscaping, lighting, all those things that we have talked about before. Um, and then signage will also probably, uh, take a little bit, but, um, beyond that, like I said, those are districts and zones, general development standards, and then signage, those will be your big three points of discussion that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, minutes?
Um, oh, sorry. Does the board wanna move to set, um, the March eleventh time date, place, or continue the rezoning rewrite?
So can I have a motion, uh, to continue the, uh, zoning reservation rewrite, uh, to March eleventh, twenty twenty-five?
At six thirty?
At six thirty, okay, at six thirty?
I provide a motion to. Yeah.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Suda?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All we have are the minutes, which, uh, truly, we can do these, you can approve all of them in one motion, correct?
Yes.
That is wonderful news.
So can I have a, um, motion, uh, to approve the meeting minutes from October eighth, twenty twenty-four, all the way to December third, twenty twenty-four? Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Salute.
Can I have a second?
I second that.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Suda?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright. Be good?
Alright.
Thanks.
Uh, yeah, we need to adjourn.